The meeting is now called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. McErvin?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
And Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. Moving on to the first item on the agenda, we have a special swearing-in ceremony for three council members who were re-elected to the City Council. And so procedurally, I guess we're going to ask the three council members, which Randy Corman, Armando Pavoni, and Ruth Perez, to come up to the front.
Yeah, Ms. Perez has asked for somebody else to...
Okay. You want to do two first? Is that the idea? Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Do you want to do them at the same time?
Fine. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Right hand. And repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Having been duly elected to the office of council member, in Renton.
Having been duly elected to the office of council member, do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of this office...
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law...
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain...
The Constitution of the State of Washington...
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the United States of America...
And the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next is Councilmember Ruth Perez.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Perez's husband, Al Ralston, will perform the swearing-in ceremony. Ms. Perez is also accompanied by her parents.
Ruth, please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Ruth Perez.
Do solemnly swear...
To solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of...
And the Constitution of...
And laws of the State of Washington...
And laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances...
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially perform...
And impartially perform.
And discharge the duties...
And discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Renton City Council...
Of the Office of Renton City Council.
According to the law...
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to our three council members. And Al, I think you've got a future job there. That was very good.
Thank you.
And special welcome to Ruth's parents that are visiting here from Mexico.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a proclamation.
Okay, proclamation. This is regarding National Mentoring Month. Proclamation, whereas our success as a community depends on helping every child succeed in school and reaching their full potential in life, and we realize that young people need a solid foundation of support to help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens, and whereas communities and schools is the only dropout prevention program in the nation proven to increase graduation rates, and this research, excuse me, this research shows that mentoring has beneficial and long-term effects on youth by increasing their chances of high school graduation and college attendance and decreasing the likelihood of substance abuse and other risky behaviors, and whereas thousands of Renton's children are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will require more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life, and whereas National Mentoring Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Renton's youth through mentoring, and whereas the mission of communities and schools of Renton is to surround students with a community of support empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim January 2018 to be National Mentoring Month in the City of Renton in tribute to the many dedicated individuals who volunteer their time, compassion, and talents to mentor young people, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and to consider giving back to our community as mentors. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this eighth day of January 2018. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Mara Fixdall from Communities and Schools, the program managers here, to accept the proclamation and say a few words. Do a little recruiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the proclamation of National Mentoring Month. I'm so excited to be here with such a large crowd. Every year, we come to the City of Renton with a request for a proclamation for National Mentoring Month. And why do we do this? It's because mentoring is such an important part of what our community does for its own. And Commies and Schools, which is the organization that I represent, has been doing this work in the City of Renton for over 20 years now. And in this past year, we have about 100 mentors who are serving 114, a lot of mentors do more than one kid, students in the Renton School District, but we need more people. So, I'm going to tell you a little story that's going to hopefully tug on some heartstrings so that we can get more mentors here. I want to acknowledge first Councilmember Pavoni, who has been a mentor with the Commies and Schools of Renton mentoring program for several years now, so thank you, Councilmember. And I'm going to tell you a story of a kid who needed a mentor. And every year during the holiday season, we ask for students to give us their wish lists so that we can find volunteers to give them some Christmas gifts and holiday gifts and things like that. And so this student put on his list, they asked for needs and wants. And so what this student put for his needs were he wanted jeans, he wanted shoes, and he wanted someone to talk to him every now and again. That's what he put on his Christmas list. And this is a high school kid who is, has very, 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 very little to his name. And, you know, I mean, he wants to look like everyone else, cool with shoes and jeans and things like that. But what he really wanted was someone to talk to. And that's all that students who we mentor really need. Mentoring can sound scary, it can sound like, I don't know what I would do to be a mentor, but really, all students need is someone just to talk to, someone to be there, and someone to listen to them. The students that we serve are in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. Our mentors meet with their mentees for just an hour a week, once a week. Just an hour a week, once a week, guys. And our mentors, our mentors come from every single walk of life you can imagine. They're city council people, they work for the city, they are, they work for the school district, they do a variety of things. But what they do is they give back during the school day for an hour a week, once a week. And I'm coming to implore people in the audience and people who are watching at home, people, other people who you might know, is that we are in great, great need of mentors. We could easily serve 400 kids tomorrow, but we need the mentors in order to do that. So we need people from the community who are willing to step up and give their time for an hour a week, once a week. You can find us, if you want to be a mentor, as I'm sure several of you in this audience would love to be, you can find us on the web, you can just Google CIS Renton. We're on Facebook, we're on Twitter, we're all over the place. So I thank again the Council for elevating mentoring to the community, and I hope that we can get a few more people out there, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mara. Thanks for being here this evening. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public meeting for an annexation. Angie.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. Angie Mathias here to do a presentation on a notice of intent that has been submitted to the city for the Lucas annexation. So the annexation process is very long, as you all know, I've been here many times presenting on annexations before. And as you can see, this one is at the very beginning of the process. They've submitted a petition to the city clerk, and now we're at that next step of meeting with the petitioner. So the purpose tonight is, we're meeting the fulfillments of state law by having a public meeting with the proponents, where you all decide whether to accept, reject, reject, or geographically modify the proposed annexation. If you do accept the annexation, then you would in turn authorize circulation of a 60 percent petition. And then we're also here to consider the proponents' request to waive the annexation fee. So by way of location, it's in the East Renton Plateau Community Planning Area, and it's this, looks like this. It's at the eastern portion of our city limits, it's about 11.6 acres in size. The current uses are single-family and vacant, and then you can see there what the boundaries are comprised of. So this annexation actually is a portion of an annexation that has been brought to you twice before as the Bradley Annexation. And you can see here on the right is the Bradley Annexation, and then this is the revised boundary that the proponent is advancing through this new Lucas annexation. Excuse me. So the Bradley Annexation first submitted in January of 2016 using the 60 percent method, that's the most frequently used method for annexation, and then they resubmitted in February of 2017 to try to use the 50-50 method. That's where 50 percent of the property owners, or the registered voters, signed the petition, and then 50 percent of the property owners representing the land area, so the acreage, as opposed to the actual, just the property values. And they were unsuccessful in both of those attempts. So they're advancing this new annexation, and you can see here with an aerial photo beneath it what the general land area looks like. Existing conditions, there are some areas of steep slopes that are here along the western portion of the annexation area that would be regulated slopes, but those are pretty much built out as they are, so they would not probably be regulated further. There is a Class III unnamed stream that is just outside the annexation area, it's 170 feet to the west approximately, and there are no wetlands that are in the vicinity. So public services, upon annexation, there would be no change to the fire authority service provision to this area, they currently serve that, the area, and that would continue. Utilities, Water District 90 currently serves that, would not change upon annexation. Renton Sewer Utility serves the community, and that would not change upon annexation, and neither would the School District, with the Renton School District. We always look at what the county has the area zone. The King County land use designation on this is urban residential medium, which allows for a range between four and 12 dwelling units per acre, and they have assigned this area with R4 zoning. The city has also designated this area as residential low density, or not also, but has designated this as residential low density, and we pre-zoned it in 2007 with R4 zoning. So if this area were to come into the city, that R4 zoning would become effective upon annexation. So I always look at our annexation policies to see if the proposed annexation meets our internal policies. And this annexation does meet the goal LE to promote annexation where and when it's in our best interests. It does meet the comprehensive plan and policy to consider our fiscal impacts, we've done that, and I'll present that later. However, it does not seem to meet the policy L8 to support annexation where infrastructure and services allow for urban densities, and it would provide, consolidate service providers and/or facilitate the efficient delivery of services. This annexation would present somewhat of a challenge for the efficient delivery of services. There's an entire cul-de-sac community here, and here where just the front portions would be in the city, and these external portions would not be in the city. Similarly, here, just one house would be in the city, and the other would still be in the county. So level of concern about how, for example, street maintenance, do we maintain this cul-de-sac or don't we? Do we go ahead and come down here and sweep the street? Do we not? As well as for police provision and concern about that. We always look at the Boundary Review Board objectives. So of those that are relevant, the preservation of natural neighborhoods and communities, the larger neighborhood, or the larger community is preserved, however, the Boundary Review Board could possibly determine that these small neighborhoods of these cul-de-sacs is not being preserved, that those are in fact sort of fracturing those cul-de-sac communities. Using physical boundaries, it does use parcel lines, and those are deemed to be adequate in terms of physical boundaries. The prevention of abnormally irregular boundaries, although the shape is not sort of generally geometric, it is irregular, the policy is actually, or their objective is to prevent abnormally irregular boundaries. They oftentimes will accept those because they accept that sort of things, they happen over time, there are a lot of incremental annexations happening. However, this annexation only touches the existing city limits here, and that's about 185 feet that is co-terminus with the existing city limits. So staff believes that there's a very high likelihood that this would be determined to be found abnormally irregular and to constitute a shoestring or corridor annexation because it does not substantially abut city limits. And the Municipal Research Services Center, which is a resource that we have that we can ask questions, somebody has asked a similar question of that body, and they determined that such an annexation probably would be invalidated if challenged within a reasonable period of time. And so if this annexation were to proceed and were challenged in court, that it would likely be overturned. So the creation of and preservation of logical service areas, it potentially is not a logical service area, it's not potentially meet that, and the Boundary Review Board could find, make that finding as well. And then annexation of an unincorporated area to a city that is not, that is urban in character, and Renton is an urban city. So we always do the fiscal analysis. The existing conditions are that there are 20 dwelling units within the annexation area with an estimated 57 residents. Future conditions are approximately nine additional dwelling units and an additional 26 residents. We always assume that costs increase at approximately 3.3 percent annually with revenue limited to only 2.5 percent increase annually, and then we limit that to sales tax, utility tax, and the franchise fee. So the fiscal analysis shows that under existing conditions, revenues would be approximately $28,000, almost $29,000 in revenue, with the costs being just under $28,000, or just low $28,000s. At year 10, revenues would be approximately $46,000, and costs about $46,000. To the capital and enterprise funds, revenues would be approximately $9,000 with costs at about $7,000, and revenues year 10 at about $13,000, and costs at about $12,000. So comments, we always circulate these to all the city departments, they all said that it represented, that it represented a logical extension of their actual services, no one commented on the efficient, efficiency of those services being provided. And they all, nobody provided additional comments that were, besides what was in your staff report. So the request to waive the annexation fee, the proponent has requested that the $2,500 fee be waived. We charge a $5,000 annexation fee for annexations that are less than 10 acres in size, and if they are larger, then it's $2,500, which is, annexation meets that criteria. The proponent did submit this boundary that they wanted to advance as the Lucas annexation in 2015, and we advised them, the administration advised them that they needed to advance the Bradley Annexation that you see here, that larger area that more sufficiently met Boundary Review Board criteria. And the proponent advanced that Bradley Annexation for approximately two years, and during that time, the city did adopt an annexation fee. We did not have that annexation fee in place when they started this process. And the proponent asserts that it is unfair to advance an annexation with our preferred boundary, and that they should not be charged to advance their proposed boundary. One of the purposes of the annexation fee is to mitigate the cost to taxpayers for some of those costs that are associated with annexation, so staff time, publications, mailing costs, the Boundary Review Board filing fee. And given that a new annexation will take the same publications, mailings, and staff time, it does not seem appropriate to go ahead and waive that $2,500. In conclusion, the best interests and general welfare of the city are not served by this annexation, it's inconsistent with our own policies, it's inconsistent with Boundary Review Board criteria, specifically the preservation of natural neighborhoods potentially, the creation or preservation of logical service areas. The most concerning is the preservation of abnormally irregular boundaries and the belief that this constitutes a shoestring or corridor annexation. So the administration recommends that council deny the request to waive the annexation fee, and further that council reject the 10 percent notice of intent to annex.
Thanks, Angie. Jason, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Angie? This is a public meeting, and we do have one person signed up to address the council, Stephen Beck. Please come to the podium, give your name, city of residence for the record, and have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Law, Councilmembers. I'm also here on behalf of the proponent, Bill Russell, who is sick tonight, so he could not attend. My name is Stephen Beck, 47, 35, Northeast 4th Street, Renton, Washington, 98059. I'm here to ask you to support the existing Lucas annexation, although I know that when city staff does not support it, it will not be approved. But I would like to give you a little history behind the proposed annexation. 20 property owners have tried four different annexations, three normal and one registered voter type annexation. In every one of them, we have missed the authorization by 1 to 4 percent. That's why we filed this particular layout, which we would have over 70 percent approval. The other people in the larger areas said no for various reasons, anywhere from no fireworks allowed in the city, to they don't like the taxes, to other city ordinances. Although the area already has Renton Fire Department and Renton Sewers, even the no-voters would like to have the Renton Police. Another benefit of being in the city would be that there are four parcels within the current annexation area that could short-plat into two to three lots. In particular, the proponent, Bill Russell, has stubouts for three sewer hookups right now, but since he is in King County, he cannot short-plat, even though he has agreed to abide by all zoning regulations in the city. As a side note, when sewers were brought up the hill, he agreed to an easement on his property so the city could save money, and that easement is still in place today. So after working many years for the City of Renton and retiring a few years ago, the property he lives on was part of his retirement nest egg, and now he can't short-plat unless he does septic systems, even though I believe the sewer system installed was installed to help protect the Cedar River aquifer. Also keep in mind, the city is the only, and I mean the only sewer purveyor in this area, has stubbed out sewer to his property already. His goal is simple, and short-plat his shy acre into three lots, sell his existing house, and build two new ramblers, one for himself and one for his daughter. This is very similar to my intentions. I have just over an acre and would like to short-plat my property in the four large lots, and retire in one of them and build one for each of my three daughters, who grew up in their early years right around the corner on 157th and 146th Street. There is a housing crisis in the Buttes Town area, it would be nice if small property owners could keep their kids living in the area by small short-plats when sewer is already stubbed, and I mean already stubbed, to their property. The small property owner is losing their retirement value due to the City of Renton regulations that do not allow, do not allow small property owners to short-plat their land into three to four lots and hook up the sewer just because they are not in the city limits. Yet the city is the only basic utility provider and has stubbed out, and I mean stubbed out to the properties. My property has stubouts to accommodate four lots, but again, I cannot short-plat unless I do septic systems because Renton will not give me a sewer availability letter due to an outdated ordinance that's on the books with Renton. The original ordinance was imposed when the county was R6 to R8 DUIs, okay? And the city, the city at that time proposed the R4, which I supported. But now the area inside and outside of city limits are R4. So why does this still ordinance make it a requirement to be in the city limits to be served by a basic mandatory utility? Remember, Washington State Code 246272A0025, local boards of health shall require new development to connect the sewer if it is within 200 feet. So do I get a septic approval for four lots, then get told I must connect the sewer because it's already stubbed to my property? Four stubouts. Why did the city put sewers down my street and have stubouts for four lots to my property? Why would the city not want the monthly income? I'm hoping that something good will come out of this rejection of the Lucas annexation, that you, council members, revisit the intent of this restrictive regulation of basic service and change it to allow short-plats of nine lots or less to hook up to the City of Renton Sewer. So I'm asking you tonight, please ask staff to add this restrictive ordinance on the docket for review in the next 30 days. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that wanted to testify on this annexation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Mr. Prince, so we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
I move that the council deny the request to waive the annexation and reject the 10 percent notice of intent to annex petition.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Ms. Witchy, that council deny the request to waive the annexation fee and reject the 10 percent notice of intent to annex. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Angie. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is audience comments. We have several people signed up to discuss something about some issues involving a preschool. When I call your name, come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer and a light right next to the city clerk. First is Janelle Stover.
Janelle Stover, S-T-O-V-E-R, City of Renton. To City Council, I own an accredited preschool in the area called Newcastle Montessori Children's House. My accreditations are with the Pacific Northwest Montessori Association, the International Association of Progressive Montessori, and my certificate training through American Montessori Society. You've all received an email about me, about my presentation, and about my history and teaching.
Excuse me, Janelle, can you get a little closer to the mic? I think it's a little hard to hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I won't go into many of my details. I was open in a small cottage in the City of Newcastle on Southeast 89th for six years, and I had served the communities of Factoria, Newcastle, but the majority of people were coming from Renton. I was full enrollment of 15 children halfway through my second year of being open, and I had a waitlist for every year after that. I would also employ one to three assistants every year since my second year of being open as well, and I teach with my husband, Keegan, who is also the part-time children's director at New Life Church in Renton under Pastor Troy Jones. I wanted to move my school to Renton, since I have lived in Renton since '04, and I needed a bigger space for more enrollment. I found the brick house on Union and 12th that was advertised zone commercially, and I contacted first the City of Renton Planning Center in May 2017. I had asked them about the marijuana store that's in the same vicinity, but they told me that I could still open in that location. I then contacted the owner of the property, who showed me the paperwork that the land was commercialized. So I had DEL, Department of Early Learning of Washington, also come and inspect the site, and they gave me the thumbs up to start processing my license for a full-day childcare center. So I got my business license through the City of Renton, and my husband and I signed a lease with the Dahlpe Properties. We started fixing up the interior, and we found we had to tear out the old wheelchair ramp due to it not being to code, and we built a new one, and also a fence around the property on the, all with the specs that the City of Renton Planning Center had given me. We were in contact with them the whole time, but we were never told that we needed a permit for the wheelchair ramp, or that the building was actually a residence in the eyes of the City of Renton. When we went to the city to get our occupancy load for the Department of Early Learning paperwork, we were then informed that the business... paperwork, we were then informed that the business was in a violation because the building was not, was considered a residence. This violation was sent to the owners of the property, not to us as a business, and to change the occupancy of the business to a daycare was no cost in 2016, but in 2017 there was a transportation impact fee. This impact fee is $48.88 per square foot of the building size. Our building is 1,210 square feet, and it has two floors. The second floor cannot be licensed through the state, but it is still a huge cost of There is a small credit that we get from the City of Renton for being a residence, which is $5,400, but this fee is very high, and it's impossible for owners upfront to pay this fee. And since this fee stays on the property, we have been in litigations with the owner since September 2017. With their unwillingness, the city is now imposing a lien on the property, and we're going to have to close by the end of the month if we cannot get this fee to be reduced or dissolved. I have 19 families that serve, that I serve in the community in a half-day, four-hour class. Eleven of these families need full daycare that I was trying to get licensed to do through Department, State Department of Early Learning. And I also have three families that want to start in the spring to enroll. I have seven families that want to start in the fall, and I have two more wanting to start in January 2019. I've already lost seven families due to this lack of full daycare and because of the occupancy being a business, of the occupancy of the building being a residence, and this incredible amount of money that the impact fee that is charged to daycares. Preschools are a necessity to our community, and our preschool, having been certified through all these people, I am a huge benefit to the families of Renton. There should not be such a barrier to provide for the people of Renton's children. If I have to close to being unable to pay this fee, these are 19 families that cannot get quality care like they're used to with me, if they could get care at all. There are many nonprofit, non-accredited preschools in our area that are also full with waitlists. So please help us to stay in business and to be a benefit to our community. All families do need this childcare, and I have four other parents as part of my clientele that also have speaking points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I wanted to just say one thing before, Janelle, before you sit down, that we don't have a lien even planned against your property, so we may be, it may be a word or something that you've heard, but I've been assured today we have no lien action whatsoever. But what I would like you to do is to touch base with our Community and Economic Development Administrator who's standing in the back of the room, so that we can get started trying to fully understand all of the issues that you're facing right now. I'm pretty confident that every member of the city council supports preschools, and we would do everything we can legally to help you out through this process. Now, I can't say what fees could be mitigated or waived, and the thing I can tell you, if there are public safety codes required for taking care of little kids, those are going to have to be followed. But because time is of the essence for you, if you meet with Chip right now and get some information and set up a time to get together, we will start working on this, you know, to try to get this thing moving for you. And council, my suggestion is that, given in a couple of days, the administration get a better idea of all of the ins and outs about this situation they're facing, and my recommendation is tonight that you refer it to a committee, and we'll report back to you on the 22nd, I think. That'd give you time to, we've reported back to the full council on the 22nd. We'd have a chance for you to have a committee meeting in the meantime and present you with all the information that we've learned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I'd move that this issue be referred to the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this issue be referred to the Planning and Development Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So if you could touch base with Chip in the back, and then we'll begin working on this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is, is it Daryl or Derry?
Darcy.
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 That building was empty for like a year. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Darcy Stallport. I also reside here in Renton. I'll be speaking on behalf of some of the other parents here who are also parents at the Newcastle Montessori School, and I appreciate you already having such a positive response. So I'm sure that what I say won't necessarily sway you, but for the sake of us being able to sort of speak our piece, I appreciate you listening. So I did a little bit of research before I came before you this evening, and Renton, as it states on our city's website, is the center of opportunity where families and businesses thrive, a city in which my family very recently moved to in August from a small suburb of Charlotte, North Carolina. When we started looking for preschools here in Renton, we were primarily concerned with three things: the program, the price, and the proximity to our home. Our daughter, Eliana, who's going to be three in February, had been going to a Goddard School just a mile from our house in Concord, North Carolina, and we were really, it was really important to us that she get an equal, if not better, type of program here. So we were, it was very important to us that she didn't just go to some daycare where she was playing all day long, but actually got to learn and grow as a toddler. So the curriculum was important, and we didn't originally think the proximity was going to be so important, but as we've learned about the greater city of Seattle, proximity and distance can be very deceiving because of our traffic. So one of the days where my wife was visiting preschools, I got a call from her, and she says, she says that school in Newcastle, it's going to be too far, and it's a very short distance from our house in Renton Highlands, but it took her at least 20 minutes to get there and 20 minutes to get back, and that's almost an hour and a half a day of just traveling to get our daughter to preschool. And given the cost of that particular preschool, we were only considering half-days. And so if you're a stay-at-home mom, which I'm not, but my wife is fantastic at, then with an infant and a toddler, the time where you only have one kid to look after is very few and far between. And so spending an hour and a half in a car of that time with that infant on only a half-day school schedule, which is basically four hours, leaves you with only two and a half hours, which is not a lot of time to do anything, especially if you have stuff to do. So other closer options had extremely limited space, if any new enrollment for late September when we were looking. But to our luck, we discovered the Newcastle Montessori School, a school with a program that, in our opinion, surpassed the basic play approach of the Goddard School that our daughter had been going, and only a short five-minute drive, and luckily was within our budget, even if it were a full-time program, which, as you heard, it's not right now. If the preschool does close, even temporarily, it will require that we and all the other parents who are here or who have departed find alternatives for our children. And finding an alternative, especially one with a comparable program for immediate enrollment, is highly unlikely. In fact, the other Montessori schools in the city of Renton that we called had no availability or at capacity and are only taking enrollment beginning for September, which is a long way away from now. You know, obviously, the other alternative is to look outside of Renton, which for most of us will mean driving further, adding congestion to our roads and causing additional commuting times, especially for those families where both parents are working. If we're forced to enroll in preschools outside of Renton, then the city loses out on those tax dollars that will be collected while we continue to use the roads to shuttle our children further and further. Now, I know all of this is anecdotal, you know, I don't have any slides or data statistically, but the possibility of this preschool closing poses real-life challenges to all these parents. And to me, I think it begs the question, if we can't figure this out, are we really a center of opportunity that family, in which families and businesses thrive? Thank you very much for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Next is Heidi Lloyd.
Good evening. So actually, my name is Heidi Sossier. I go by Lloyd for work, so it's a little confusing sometimes. I'm the proud mother of two boys that are here tonight, Aiden and Bryce. Aiden spent two years with Mrs. Janelle at Newcastle before transitioning to Maplewood Heights Elementary. Bryce is three and is soon his first year at Newcastle Montessori. Personally, I'm the treasurer at the Renton District for PTA and a member of the PTA from Maplewood Heights. I'm a parent that's very involved for our children and very concerned about the quality of education that they're going to be getting. My husband and I were thrilled at the end of last year when Mrs. Janelle was able to move the school to the city of Renton. It cut significant commute time for us and made the school much more accommodating. We live in the Renton Highlands, and it's just about 10 minutes. As a contractor, my husband volunteered his time and skills, and we helped build the fence on the property to enclose the play area. We're very vested in seeing this school succeed and grow for the community. So Janelle, Mrs. Janelle has shared a lot with us in regards to what she's been dealing with, and one of those things was the traffic to impact fees for the licensing process. I'm personally an escrow agent and have run my own business for the last nine years, so both numbers in small business are really within my wheelhouse. I've reviewed the City of Renton traffic impact fees for past and present years. I came to some conclusions that I'd like to share with everyone today, please. The increase in traffic impact fees from 2016 to 2017 ranged in anywhere from 1.08 to four times higher, depending on the type of business that was, that was being looked at. I understand the need for traffic impact fees and for doing business here to contribute to the growing infrastructure and the cost to maintain the roads that we depend on. But looking at these figures, I really couldn't agree with the distribution of some of the services that were provided. For us, childcare and early childhood education is a vital need for both my family and the families of the city of Renton, but the impact fees for daycares were over one and a half times that of a bar, which, while enjoyable, didn't seem to have the same societal impact for me as those of a childcare education center. It's also 6.7 times higher than a general office location, which could, in fact, have more traffic impact depending on the size of the high-rise. In further research, I was looked out to other cities in regards to these same situations. I think we can all agree that traffic impact, regardless of the city, would be the same for any type of daycare, but in the city of Kirkland, that traffic impact fee is only $24 for the same space, even though their median income is 30% higher than here in Renton. City of Kent charges $15 to $21, depending on the location in or out of the city of Renton, and their median income is only 12% less than ours. So when it comes to making any business profitable and viable, the business owner must balance the costs and the income and come out ahead in order to stay in business. In order to do that, most fees and costs that they incur are eventually passed down to us as consumers. The enormity of the current traffic impact fees for the daycare has a dangerous precedent for us in driving high-quality early childhood education out of our cities and to other communities for them to be served. They say that it takes a village for us to raise a child, and my family counts Mrs. Janelle, Keegan, and Newcastle Montessori as an integral part of our village. To recruit families from the city of Renton from having access to this amazing resource because of a prohibitive cost of licensing would be a great disservice, not only for the specific families that are here tonight, but for the greater community that these children will become a part of and, in my hope, eventually lead. So I thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Next is Phil Nguyen.
My name is Philip Hune. I live in Renton. I'm a proud graduate of the Renton School District. After graduation, I went on to do my undergraduate study at University of Chicago, came back to University of Washington to do my grad school, applied graduation, and moved on to Valley Medical School where I'm providing direct medical care. Obviously, I believe in the Renton School education and also the city overall, so thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here today. After listening to Mayor's position on, and the council's position on early childhood education, I feel I'm preaching to the choir, so I apologize, and we're going to make it as quick as possible. Just to go look at the hard data showing how high-quality childcare is a cost-effective public policy, I will talk about the work that Nobel economist James Hegman at the University of Chicago, who have looked at amounts of data. Among them were two cohort studies, looking at 500 adults, looking at them back to the 60s when they were newborns to now when they're in their 50s. And the data have shown that education, a dollar spent on high-quality early childhood education program reduces a higher return, produces a higher return on investment than does almost any major alternative. As you can see in this graph, the blue and also the lemon yellow bars are investments in the prenatal programs, programs targeted toward the earliest years, and then the preschool programs, that all show the highest return on the dollar. So why is that? It's actually really common sense. Better health, in terms of their effects on the kids, it reduces the long-term outcomes, a long-term cost by improving better health outcomes, less need for special education and social services, lower criminal costs, and increased productivity among families. These are really fairly common sense stuff. I mean, we all know it. If we didn't, I think Professor James Hegman just happened to publish these things and won, and got the Nobel Prize for it, we all could have gotten it. In terms of the effects on the parents, the parents can stay in the workforce, maximize their current and future earnings, and by effect, it will increase the living standards and quality of our city. However, the access to early childhood education has been very abysmal. In, as recent as 2014, only 25% of low-income children in South King County region attended a high-quality learning programs. There's a huge gap between kindergarten readiness by income, and we're not talking about lower-income families, we're talking about a huge gap between high-income and middle-income kids. Last year, the Seattle Times did a research paper, and they talked to a couple and who is very representative of a national issue. This young couple works at a nonprofit organization in a local school district, lives in the South Seattle neighborhood, out of respect, not to be confused with Magnolia. The total family income was $70,000, and according to a credible Pewter research, that's straight down the middle-income tier in the city of Seattle. For this couple, they could not afford a high-quality childcare for their only son. So there are many issues that are putting a huge constraint on the family budget and limit access to these programs, skyrocketing housing costs, increase in population, and an issue that we can change is the shortage of high-quality childcare. Senator Patty Murray stated, "Too many people are paying more than they can for childcare. It's a family issue, it's a community issue, and it's a national issue." She's currently working on the Childcare for Working Families Act to increase affordable childcare options, and I think one of Mrs. Janelle's students is actually helping her with the bill. I'm just kidding. Luckily, we are living in the city of Renton, and the city of Renton has shown leadership and commitment to early childhood education. Starting in 2015, our Renton School District was among the first seven districts part of the roadmap project to provide full-day kindergarten. In 2009, less than 50% of kindergarten students were attending full-day. In 2015, after participating in this project and taking that leadership, 100% of our kids, kindergarten kids here are attending full-day, and that spearheaded the Basic Education Act in 2017 and 2018, which is the current school year, to require all school districts and require the state to fund a full-day kindergarten program. So essentially, we have bought a Mercedes. We need to make sure that our kids are not going to wreck it.
I'm sorry, your five minutes are, are you able to wrap this up real quickly?
Sure, just my final slide.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So we need to maximize our investment by, by investment in kindergarten program by increasing supply of high-quality pre-K programs. Only two programs, Montessori programs- Only two programs, Montessori programs, are available right now, Cedar River and Newcastle. With this permanent fee, high-permanent fee, Newcastle is going to go out of business and because it's too much. The fee really does not align with the city's commitment to education. Some people might argue this may create an exception for other businesses to ask for the same exemption, but I would argue it does not because investing in education, the business of education is our rule, and we have shown that we have, that's part of our longstanding core values and priority. In essence, the financial benefits of early childhood education significantly outweigh the loss in revenue from eliminating the permitting fee. So that is a cost-effective public policy. It's circle time.
Okay.
Thank you for letting us tell.
You bet. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Mina Merchant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Mina Merchant, and I also live in Renton, up in the Highlands, and my young son, Mohan, currently attends Newcastle Montessori. He's actually our second son to attend Newcastle Montessori. My older son, Mizan, who's now in fourth grade at Maplewood Heights Elementary, he went to Newcastle Montessori for two and a half years, from ages three and a half to six years old. Ms. Janelle has been really instrumental in creating an environment and a structure that our boys can depend on. They have learned through Ms. Janelle's instruction to be great young citizens, how to conduct themselves with others, how to be considerate, and how to be fair. Mizan has gone on to do many amazing things, namely, he represented our district and our state at the National Reflections Competition last year, where he won second place for a film that he created. We had the opportunity to go with him to Washington DC, where he attended an award ceremony at the Department of Education. As we've seen earlier in the discussions, research points heavily to how influential and important early childhood education is for our society and our community, and also for the success of the individual child. Mizan is a perfect example of how influential early childhood education can be and how it can spur a young mind to make a big impact. Our community would suffer a big loss without places like Newcastle Montessori, and I ask the city council and Mr. Mayor to consider how our city's policies can help support this kind of small business instead of forcing them to look elsewhere to build their schools. As you can see, we have a real showing of support here today. Several families, both past and present, have come to show how important a school like this is to our community, and we, as parents, wonder what we can do to help in this situation. Can we ask the city to reconsider the fee being charged? Can we ask the city to work with the landlord directly to come up with a solution that works for all parties involved? How can we work together to keep a wonderful resource like Newcastle Montessori in our community? We are willing, we are open, and we are here to help in any way we can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have eight items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Seeing none, I move that the consent agenda be approved as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the planning, oops, old habits die hard. The whole committee has a committee report.
Okay. Committee of the whole committee report Downtown Civic Core Project. The Committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the planning commission as staff recommendation to approve adoption of the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan dated January 2018. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Move council concur with the committee, the whole committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the committee of the whole report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a finance committee report.
Okay, finance committee report approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves the following payments. One, accounts payable, total payment of $8,721,088.21. This is for vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and 10 wire transfers. Two, payroll, total payment of $2,660,325.52 for payroll vouchers, including 1,261 direct deposits and 52 checks. And three, Kidder Matthews, a total payment of $254,592.54 for vouchers. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair, or all members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it was interesting this week, we had 213 pages of vouchers to review.
That'll teach you to have a vacation.
Yeah, it really did. But a bit interesting is that we're sending two officers to the Washington State Training Commission, and as everybody knows, it's my bugaboo on this, is that traffic fines are supposed to pay for this, but they're charging us $9,471. I think of interest is people look at our street sweepers, they're out there all the time, but King County charges us for dumping that waste that we pick up, and for a month that was $4,308.12. I have a few others, but all in the interest of time, give up that today. And with that, move that the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
How about Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to legislation, we have a resolution, a couple ordinances.
Okay, the resolution is regarding the Downtown Civic Core Plan, Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I wanted to just take a moment to thank staff, John Cullum in particular is in the back of the room, as well as all of our businesses and citizens that got involved in this plan. It's really a nice position to be in where we can move forward with a lot of planning that involved a lot of people in their opinion, so very good job. Thank you, John. Okay.
Okay, next is an ordinance for first reading. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 4690 of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying regulations and exemptions for utility undergrounding requirements and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final ordinance is for second and final reading. It's regarding illicit discharge regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4630J and section 46100 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending illicit discharge regulations, including amending the definitions for illicit connection, illicit discharge, municipal separate storm sewer system, and stormwater, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been removed by Mr. McIrvin, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witchy.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few things to report. Monday, January 15, 2018, there'll be no meetings to the celebration of the Martin Luther King Junior Day holiday. On Monday, January 22, at 5:30 PM, we have committed a hole. We have three items on the agenda: the 2017 community results, survey results, small cellular wireless facilities, and the Bike Trail Master Plan Public Input Update, and committed a hole being in council chambers. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the finance committee will meet Monday, January 22 at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. We have six issues. Number one, maintenance service workers hire at step D, professional services agreement for arborist inspection services, which I, we need, we had to take down two big cottonwood trees this last month, the $216,000, so been nice to have that. Three, convert maintenance service secretary two position to admin assistant one. Four, compensate GIS analyst two to at step E, and then vouchers, and hopefully not 213 pages, and emerging issues in revenue streams. And that is all for that, but, Mr. Mayor, as most people that know me know that I use the Renton Community Center's exercise room, and a lot of the people down there happen to know that I'm on the city council. And consequently, I got three emails over the weekend about the conditions of the treadmills and some of the other equipment, and I move that that be referred to the Community Services Committee and the administration.
Second.
Okay, the, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that the issue and terms of the condition of treadmills and other equipment at the community center be referred to the Community Services Committee and the administration.
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Jason, here's the.
The ayes have it.
And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the utilities committee that was scheduled, committee meeting that was scheduled for Thursday, January 11, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to announce the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Thursday, January 11 at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. One item on the agenda, emerging issues in community economic development, specifically multifamily property tax exemptions, and then would it also be appropriate to add on the issue referred tonight, or would that be two expeditious?
I would like, Mr. Covington, you think it'd be appropriate we add this one for the 14th? Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so we'll add the, I don't know what to call that, development fees for early childhood education?
Probably.
Generally, I think the Montessori, Newcastle Montessori, Montessori School, Montessori preschool development issues, I think, probably just keep it broad. It may be more than fees, we're not sure.
Okay, so exactly what he said.
Jason will clean it up and make us both sound really articulate.
You guys will sound good if they had.
Is that a, do we need a motion?
No.
It was already referred. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Good, you're right.
Thank you. Ms. Perez.
None of business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting on Monday, January 22 at 5:00 PM. We'll meet in the council conference room. We have one issue, it's emerging public, emerging issues in public safety, and also I have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of here. So as the council knows, we have an RFP proposal for 200 mil out there, and over the holiday, scheduling came up, and there's meetings kind of set for the council to be involved. Randy and myself were involved in it through the last process. We've again volunteered our time to be part of the process again, but we needed to bring it up with council and see if there was anybody else that was interested in partaking in it, or if they wanted to allow us to do it, or, and that is.
Sounds like we picked the two best people on the council to do it.
Go forth.
It looks like you've been elected.
All right.
Thanks for the honor of representing here.
Yes, all right. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Corman.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.